This meeting is being recorded.
City of Rockaway Beach City Council meeting on Wednesday, July 16th, 2025 at 6:00 PM will come to order. The city council and staff want our business meetings to be a safe place for all to attend and share their opinions, a place of common courtesy and civility. As such, we request all people in attendance respect those attending and the opinions of those with whom you may disagree during meetings, prior to meetings, during breaks and after meetings. This will enable our community to establish an environment where in all issues and opinions may be fairly considered and decisions, though sometimes difficult, will be made in a spirit of mutual respect for all community members, no matter our differences. Please silence your cell phones and let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the people who live on this land. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's record who is in attendance. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conraff.
Present.
Counselor Martine.
Here.
Counselor McGinnis.
Present.
And Mayor McNeely is present. The consent agenda is a tool used to streamline meeting procedures by collecting routine, non-controversial items into a group whereby all are passed with a single motion and vote. You have before you the consent agenda on approval of the June 11th, 2025 regular meeting minutes, approval of the June 11th, 2025 workshop minutes and review of financial reports. The minutes of the previous meetings and financial reports were distributed beforehand. Does a council wish to remove any of these items from the consent agenda to be discussed individually during item 11, items removed from consent agenda? Since there are no items for removal, are there any clarifying questions pertaining to the documents in the consent agenda? All right, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda.
My second motion.
It is moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conraff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We have no presentations, guests or announcements, so we move on to staff reports. The chair recognizes Captain Jeff Grace to report for the fire department. Come on down.
Hello everyone. I'm Mayor, City Council. City manager. It's a pleasure to be here in front of you today. Thank you for having me. The following is a report for the activities and operations of the Rockaway Beach Fire Rescue for the month of June 2025. The fire department responded or participated in 88 events during the month of June, which is an average of 2.9 per day. The calls are broken down as far as 911 calls. We had 42 911 calls for service. 32 of those which were medical, two fire alarms, three structured fires, two water rescues, two motor vehicle accidents and one outside fire. We have eight trainings in the month of June, water rescue training, hose trains, drone operations and EMT classes. We finished up the EMT basic class in the middle of June and one week later we started the advanced EMT class. Non-emergency calls, we had 38. 16 of those were beach safety, five public assist, six lift assists, seven burner complaints and four radio calls. A year or two later and you'll see in your notes there, from 2021 to 2025, there was a significant increase in call volume. With a pretty major increase just from 2024 to 2025. As far as trainings go, the department on Thursday nights in June focused on fire operations, surf rescue and drone operation and then we continue like I said the EMT class, which happens on Wednesdays and Saturdays. The advanced EMT class, like I said, started about three weeks ago and firefighter Boos is one of our participants in that class. In July, we will focus our training on fire operations, wildland, including our firefighter one academy and then continuing our advanced EMT course, which is a 10-week class. During the month of June, we had crews on the beach 16 times, providing information to citizens and visitors and continue to work with state parks to better coordinate safety enforcement actions on our beach. You have the breakdown in front of you hopefully about what we did for that. We held our quarterly SURF training in June, which where I taught CPR and first aid to our members. Our emergency management team participated in the Fourth of July parade. Hopefully you all, everyone got a chance to see their float. They were very, very proud of their float. Unfortunately, we didn't win a prize.
But you did give out a lot of candy.
Yeah, yeah. They worked really hard on that. Our preparedness information has been received and the envelopes arrived this week, so we're going to start putting those together and those should be mailed out in the very near future, so everyone should be seeing those in their mail very soon. Chief Hesse toured the Cannon Beach Emergency Supply Shed and Evacuation Sites and got a much better idea of understanding of where we are and where we want to be as far as emergency people, where to see preparedness goes in the future. Chief Hesse and I continue to participate in TC4 and with the Emergency Volunteer Corps in the Haylen Bay. Our collaboration with the EVCMB in particular has benefited our program here. We've learned a lot from them kind of copying what they're doing. And we're excited to continue that partnership with him. Chief Hesse met and toured with members of the Oregon State Fire Marshal's Wildfire Risk Reduction Specialist. They spent several hours driving around Rockaway, looking at our wildland interface and the risks we have inside of our city limits here. The team took lots of pictures and notes and will be getting back to us about their findings to help assist in our wildland litigation plan. Like as always, if anyone is interested in joining our preparedness groups, our SURF or our radio groups, contact Chief Hesse or myself for that. Chief Hesse will be presenting information at the next council workshop about our emergency management program and where we are currently with that. Our summer staff has been hired and we are currently onboarding them, one of which is here tonight because she wanted to see how the city ran.
Would you introduce her, please?
Yes, Shauna Yost. This is Shauna Yost.
Welcome to Rockaway Beach.
And the other one, her name is Fiara Venenzia. Both are EMTs. Shauna has a lot of experience, ten years' experience and EMT experience. And Fiara has been one of our volunteers for about a year now and is also, like I said, also on EMT. She was in my EMT class a couple years ago.
Excellent.
Chief Hesse. This is a wink. This is a big wink, Melissa.
Do you need a larger wink?
Chief Hesse recently traveled to South Dakota and completed our final inspection on our ladder truck, which you can see up on the board here. He was very excited to see that. He kept sending us pictures and we were very excited to see our name on the side of it finally. It was amazing. We should see delivery of that by the end of the month, so very exciting. There is a picture of Chief driving it on the flat east straight roads of South Dakota. After we did some training with it, so we have a three-day training with Rosenbauer who we purchased it from. We have three-day training and training continues after that. And we get it all equipped, we will put it in service sometime hopefully in mid-August. And we are planning a push-in ceremony for that vehicle, but we'll keep everybody informed when that's going to occur. It's going to be a party. And so, and that is all I've got. If you have any questions or...
Counselors, any questions, comments for Captain Grace?
I have one.
I know you.
You mentioned the SURF training and is there a timeline when people could be prepared if they want to join the next SURF class?
I will come up with a date. I'm trying to figure out when I'm available. It's going to be sometime.
After the busy season?
After the busy season, yeah. Late fall, early winter, yeah.
Several of us are SURF trained in this room, myself included, and it's definitely worthwhile going through. We learned a lot about preparedness.
Agreed. And our collaboration with the Emergency Volunteer Corps in Haylen Bay, they are starting to work more with their fire department out there, so we're looking into how we can make that happen also. I just want to say nice job, Captain.
Thanks for standing in for Chief Hesse.
Yeah, no problem. If you don't mind, I'm going to leave because I have an EMT class to teach now.
We understand, appreciate you taking the time to share the report and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. All right, the chair recognized Deputy Kevin Grogan to report for the Rockaway Beach Patrol.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The month of June kept the Sheriff's Department and Rockaway Beach deputies extremely busy. Several criminal cases and traffic stress incidents and ordinance complaints. The main one that we dealt with, which is a very big success for us, was the RV that was parked near the Lake South Headway has been moved and all the other ordinance related issues have been resolved. We're also excited to announce that we have Deputy Waters, who joined us at the beginning of the month. He has several years with the Sheriff's Department and he has a law enforcement experience, including working in the corrections before he transferred to the road. So he brings a large set of skills to Rockaway, which we are very, very looking forward to. So just to cover a couple notable calls of service. First one, trespassing in Lake Lidl area. And there was also an assault reported in Lake Lidl parking lot. There are no arrests in this case at this time. Two vehicle break-ins were reported. A suspect has been identified in one of the cases and the case has been forwarded to the District Attorney's Office. An assault insisting of domestic violence was reported. This case is currently under investigation. A hit and run in the waist I reported. No suspects in that case. And then an attempt to lure a minor over the internet was reported and that case has been forwarded to the detective's office. And one big note that we have here. Summer is going. We all know where the inter- summer is going. We all know where the intersections are. Watch out for pedestrians, speed, everything like that. I'll say it again. At most of our intersections on the west side of the highway, we have two-stop signs before you get to the freeway, so we'll make sure we're checking out for that. And I also have been notified that Deputy Waters will be here shortly, so if you guys want to pick his brain at the end of the meeting, I highly recommend that.
Could we recognize him when?
We'll recognize.
No, I mean, give him a shout out when he comes.
Yeah, I'll make sure that he is.
And I do have one other thing, because this last couple of weeks, I've had an uptick on people saying, oh, we don't have a police department. The sheriff's department occasionally drives through and checks on things. And so would you just real quickly tell people how you're stationed here?
So we have our substation in Rockaway, so we have a little office over here where we like to do our reports, so that's where we catch up on all reports and some phone calls that we might have to take care of. But other than that, we try to drive through all the neighborhoods as much as we can throughout the day. Granted, the calls that we have to take, sometimes some take a couple minutes, sometimes they take a couple hours. That involves traffic enforcement, ordinance violations that are reported to us or that we observe, parking violations, especially down at the Cedar Trail. We get a lot of those. So it's pretty much driving, making ourselves known, and just being ready for calls at all times. So we're here.
This is your full-time position?
This is my full-time position, yes.
Thank you for that clarification.
So I'm not going to tell you anything you don't already know, but we have a speeding problem in Rockaway Beach, and I'm not talking about 101. I'm talking about North Third, McHalen, South Second.
Lake Lidle.
Lake Lidle. It would be great if you and your fellow deputies maybe could put your heads together and think about what you might be able to do, whether it's position.
We have some speed trailers that are available. And now we do have one that's located in Donna Beach. I can talk to Deputy Waters, who usually moves those around the county. If we have a certain problem area that we have, we can get it set up. I know that we have talked individuals already that have been reported to us through ordinance violations about speeding through the neighborhoods. So it's essentially just catching them in the act, because unfortunately, with speeding violations, that's something that us as deputies have to observe or date. If we can get problem areas, just pass it over to the non-emergency traffic complaints. That works. Get us a heads up of where we're supposed to be at. There's a lot of time we're looking at. Most of the time, we're looking at the people coming fifty-five into a thirty and not paying attention to all the pedestrians down the west side of town. So if there's parts in the neighborhood that you guys want to check out, just let us know.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. There's been, Lake Lidle specifically, having an issue with someone on a motorcycle. And everybody's like, the police aren't doing anything. And I'm like, if you don't call them, they don't know. And so just making sure that, like, they should be calling non-emergency, because that's what I've suggested, and people are like, well, we don't have police. I'm like, yes, we absolutely do.
And that's the thing, is a big occurrence is, you know, people, I don't know if they're afraid to call in the non-emergency or nine-one-one, but this is our job.
Right.
This is what we respond to, so don't be afraid to call in a traffic complaint, even if it's your neighbor or someone you see quite a bit. I mean, if you stop and talk to them, that's a start, so.
I have a question. Is there any chance that we could get street address, streets on, not necessarily an address, but it's kind of tells us what all is going on, but it doesn't tell us where?
I'll have to talk to my records. I can see what we can do moving forward, but that's an easy question, so.
Yeah, because it doesn't do us any good if we don't know where it is. I don't think of us.
And another clarifying point is for people in the community is that this police report is available online through the city website. So you get to see everything that we city councilors see as far as the police report goes.
Oh.
Speaking.
Everyone is very much. Hello.
Welcome to Rockaway.
All right, again, if you have any questions, we'll be around at the end of the meeting.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, the chair recognized Public Works Director Mary Mertz to report on Public Works.
Thank you for having me this evening, Council and City Manager Shepherd. I wanted to start by noting that Superintendent Emerson is out this evening, which is why I am here. He's on a well-deserved vacation, so sees excuses absent, and accept my presence for you. I want to start by thanking the volunteers, our fire department, as well as our Public Works Department for putting on a fantastic Fourth of July this year. The fireworks parade and the display were, fireworks display and the parade were awesome from a Public Works perspective. This year was especially smooth and successful, so just a shout out to everyone who was involved, and thanks to everybody. I want to bring up some of our monthly highlights that Superintendent Emerson highlighted in his report. For water, the lead and copper testing is underway. That is residential testing of water sources, so our Public Works Department is working with volunteer residents who have properties that are aged from nineteen eighty-five and older to test their water to see if there's any lead and copper present. If anyone's interested, please reach out to Public Works. How do you touch their water as part of that? We also have the 2024 Annual Drinking Water Quality Report, which is available on the city's website under our Public Works section, where water quality is in great standing. There was really nothing to report in that, which is always great to report. As far as roads go, I know last month it was discussed the crosswalk beacon at 101 in Washington was damaged. The city worked with ODOT. That's been repaired. We've also done some coal replacement at Beacon and South Second, which was part of our stormwater improvement plan, so that works all then completed. As far as our parks go, I want to give a shout out to Bill Hassel for championing this project of getting some new benches installed at the Cedar Creek Boardwalk. They have been really successful. We hear great things back from the public about them. I anticipate we will be adding several more of those along the way, but it's making our accessible boardwalk even more accessible, so thank you very much, Mr. Hassel. Also want to note that no overnight parking signs have been installed at the city parks and at our parking lots in response to some overnight camping that's been taking place, or just some overnight parking. So hopefully that alleviates that problem. If it does not, please let us know. So ongoing projects that we have at the moment, Sandbury Trail Planning and Design is still taking place. We're working with Ulta Consultants for that project. That's to get us to thirty percent design of this project, so it's our planning and then thirty percent design. The survey work is all completed. We're going to do some borings, the entire length of that trail. That should wrap up in the coming months, and we'll do that closeout with our ODOT grant for that work. After that, we will move forward with funding and see where that project takes us. But it's a three-phased construction plan for the Sandbury Trail project, which will go from the high school to provide a safe route to school, all the way to Washington Street, to provide a safe passage all the way through our community. We are doing some wastewater plant pump improvements. We just got in our pumps order for this project. They should be installed in the coming months. Public Works is really excited to get that project underway. Probably not that exciting to the rest, but our guys are very excited about it. OPRD funding for our Lake Lidle restrooms and parking lots is moving forward. That project is currently wrapping up with its archaeological survey that's going to finish this month. Then that work will go to the State Resort Preservation Office for review. Once that is complete, mayor review shows everything is all good, all the tribes are on board, then we'll finally receive our funding to be able to construct new restrooms, accessible restrooms at Lake Lidle, as well as two accessible parking spots that will be paved. This is part of a phased improvement plan to the site that the city is leased from the county at Lake Lidle. And then our Jetty Creek watershed acquisition project is a huge project for the city. We are looking to acquire the lower portion of the Jetty Creek watershed. There's a lot of moving parts in that project. We've applied for multiple grants as well as a loan to secure the lower portion, pending how much money we'll receive grant-wise. So we did receive an approval to enter into a loan to purchase the entire portion of the watershed. But depending on what shakes out, grant-wise, we'll only take a portion of that funding, but really excited that that's moving forward. And then we are going to be doing a wastewater rate study. That was discussed at our council workshop this evening. If you're not aware, we have not changed our rates since, for the, since 2009, so it's been quite a long time. Obviously, things have changed in the world since then. There's been a lot of inflation. Cost of goods has gone up, so our rates haven't kept up with that. So we're working with engineers, HDR, to do a study of where our rates need to be in comparisons to other communities. We will be bringing this back to the council in August with some draft findings. Then we'll do a bunch of public outreach this fall, followed by final results being brought to the council at their December meeting. And then future projects that we've got coming up. We have our Pacific Street Utility and Paving Project. This is a big project for us this year. We're going to be replacing the waterline, doing some storm improvements, and then also paving, finally, Pacific Street. We're going to begin that utility work in October. Then we'll actually do the paving in March of next year, and we should finish that entire project by the end of March. So a lot of moving pieces with that project to get it all timed out for our short paving season, but also not have the road torn up during our high-traffic season. So you'll have to bear with us, but we'll keep you posted, and everybody update. We'll do a lot of community outreach, so no one's surprised when the road's getting torn up or what's happening there. Staff are also working on submitting a grant to the Transportation Growth Management Program. That's to do an update to our transportation system plan. That hasn't been updated in nearly ten years. So it doesn't include a lot of our larger transportation plans or many plans for multimodal transportation that we've heard a lot about that our community wants. So seeking funding for that, and also to make our community more disaster resilient. So it's a really competitive grant pool this year. They've received almost sixty percent more applications than they generally do, but we are seeking funding through that program. Next on the list is recruitment of a code enforcement officer, so that's on a high priority for Public Works. We'll be putting that out. My hope is, by the end of next month, have that at least advertised, looking for people to help our community. We've heard a lot that people would like to see this position filled in Rockaway to alleviate some of the problems that occurs. And then we have our Nidana water main upgrades. Earlier, I guess at the end of last year, we received funding through the state water revolving loan fund to do a pretty large water main upgrade project in Nidana that's going to pull out all of the old concrete pipe, replace it with PVC, so that's coming up. We anticipate that to kick off at the end of this year. And then the second phase of Lake Lidle is to do some in-water work. So the Oregon Marine Board is working with the city of Rockaway. They've done a preliminary design to do a new boat ramp, ADA kayak launch, a new fishing pier, and to make all of that accessible. So we'll be bringing that to the public for some feedback this summer, and then again, working with the Marine Board in the future on getting funding and actually bringing that project to fruition, so really exciting future coming for Lake Lidle. All right, and then some great milestones that were achieved by our Public Works staff this month. The day before, fourth, both Mitch and Logan went and tested and received certifications. Mitch got his wastewater treatment level-two certification, and Logan received his wastewater level-one, collection level-one certification. These are, they're not easy to achieve, so I think Superintendent Emerson wrote it best in his report this week, so I will just read that to you. "These certifications are tough to get and require a strong mix of field experience and study, especially while balancing a full-time responsibilities of their jobs. Their success is a testament to their commitment to learning and growing in their roles, and a big step forward for the city as we continue to build a stronger, more skilled team." So if anyone could just quickly give a round of applause to them. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, I, no, you, did you have one first?
Well, it's not a question. I was just going to, so Director Mertz, you mentioned the wastewater study. We did discuss it at our workshop earlier this evening. We got a presentation on the plan and how we're going to execute that, so I would encourage anybody who has any interest in what we're going to do, that would be a good first step. Go and watch it. It's just the beginning of the workshop, but that'll give you a good overview of how this is going to play out. What is particularly important to me, and I'm excited, is there'll be, as Director Mertz said, a lot of community outreach, so that everybody understands the process. What I'd like you to take away from this, though, is our sewer system, the fees we collect are intended to pay for it. And we are about to go in the red with our current billing, which is sixteen years old. So this is very important to the city to stay fiscally sound. We cannot use money from other funds to run our sewer system. It has to come from the fees that we charge, and we are about to go into the red, so that's it.
No, I was just going to say, welcome to your first full month as Director of Public Works, and it looks like you've jumped in with both feet.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Director Mertz. All right, the floor is here. City Manager Shepherd to report on the city.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So I think, as everybody knows, it's been a, been a very busy month. It always is this time of year. But it's nice to see that Fire Chief Hesse and Superintendent Emerson have been able to take some time off. And this meeting's no different. We've got a lot going on. There's eight resolutions. We're going to hold interviews for potential city council candidates. You'll appoint a candidate to fill the position. We'll swear them in, they'll sit down, so there's a lot going on tonight. And that's not a big deal. So first up tonight is Resolution Thirty-Six, which is to correct a Scrivener's error, also known as a typo. So we discovered that there's an error in Budget Resolution Twenty-Two. There's a fifty-dollar misstatement in the total funds for the year, and Resolution Thirty-Six basically amends Resolution Twenty-Two and sets the record straight on the total budget amount for the budget year twenty-five, twenty-six. Resolution Thirty-Seven approves an ODOT speed modification for the business district here in Rockaway Beach. So ODOT conducted a speed zone investigation for downtown Rockaway for our business district, which they consider to be from the Little White Church all the way to the Dollar General. It's about a half a mile, and they are recommending a reduction in the speed limit in that zone from thirty to twenty miles per hour. And the council concurs, ODOT will implement those changes at their expense. All right, and then Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-Five dash thirty-eight appoints members to the Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee. The city council establishes committee last month. It's a five-member committee that will review the progress on the Forest Stewardship Plan, plans development. We'll roll over three members, former members from the SPADAAC committee, and we'll appoint two members tonight, also a city council liaison, it sounds like. And this committee will meet in, for the first time, in mid-August. The first meeting might be a site visit to the Astoria watershed. We'll see, we'll see how that pans out. Next up is Resolution Thirty-Nine, which recommends granting a liquor license for spirits of the West, and I think they're going to have a spot in the old police building next to the jujitsu gym. But they're looking to have on-premise sales consumption and also manufacturing and production. So anyway, if the council recommends granting approval of the liquor license, Oregon Commission, Oregon Liquor Commission will likely grant their license. And it's just nice to see, nice to see another business coming into Rockaway Beach. All right, so this is a big one, Resolution Two Thousand Twenty-Five dash forty authorizes a drinking water source protection grant agreement. So as far as the watershed acquisition project goes, this is, this is big news. This is the first real big, significant amount of funding towards the acquisition of the lower half of the Jetty Creek watershed. So it's one, over one point four million dollars towards that goal. So it's great. It's what we've been working for. Um, also, on the same note, uh, we are, uh, nearly, uh, nearly, uh, approved for a clean water, uh, 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 clean water, uh, source, uh, clean water state revolving fund, which should cover the remaining, uh, funds needed to purchase the lower half of the watershed. Um, so we're getting very close, uh, to having a funding, funding package put together, uh, between, uh, cash, cash grants, um, uh, uh, loans and forgivable loan, uh, principal to be able to purchase the, uh, the entire, uh, lower half of the Jetty Creek watershed. Um, and if everything stays on track, we should be able to do that by the deadline of the end of, uh, two thousand twenty-six. So anyway, kudos to everybody who worked on that to get us there. It's a very, very tough environment to find funding right now, but I think we've, I think we've been able to do it. Um, so, so good news on that front. And then on the same note, uh, regarding the watershed, um, uh, Resolution Forty-One authorizes payments to Stimson Lumber to support mechanical road brushing. Uh, basically, uh, Stimson Lumber owns the upper half of the Jetty Creek watershed. They own about seven hundred and fifty acres. They've got eleven miles of roads. And so what they've agreed to do, and they've been great to work with, is, uh, if the city's willing to pay the difference, uh, they will switch from herbicide applications to maintain their roads to mechanical brushing. Uh, and so for about ten thousand dollars, um, uh, they agreed to, uh, use mechanical brushing instead of herbicides uh, to maintain their roads through July two thousand twenty-eight. Um, so it's a, it's a, it's a nice move. It's a, it's a great way, great path forward. It keeps the herbicides, uh, out of the watershed, uh, for road maintenance, so, um, yeah. All right, and then Resolution Forty-Two, approving additional awards for the, uh, Two Thousand Twenty-Five Business Facade Program. Uh, so the last council meeting, the council awarded, uh, two hundred, two hundred and nine thousand in grant funds to nine different businesses in Rockaway Beach to improve their, their facades or building frontages. Um, and the council is gracious enough to allow the four remaining applicants who weren't funded to come back, uh, beef up their application and strengthen it and, uh, for re-review. The council did that earlier tonight, and, uh, um, out of the four applicants that were allowed to resubmit, three did. And, uh, there's a consensus, uh, that the council formed at the workshop to, to award to all three. So it looks like we'll be awarding, uh, another seventy-three, almost seventy-four thousand dollars towards this facade grant, uh, this year. So anyway, the total for facade grants could be nearly three hundred thousand dollars this year. Um, and it's wonderful. I don't, I don't know of any city our size who's done anything remotely close to that, uh, as far as supporting their, their business community. So kudos to the council and the budget committee, uh, for supporting our businesses, uh, in that capacity. It's pretty great. All right, and then probably the most impactful action tonight is, uh, appointing a new council member to fill vacant position four. Uh, the council received four applications, uh, last month. They narrowed it down to three. And so we've narrowed it down to, uh, Brian Coller, uh, uh, Kenneth Kanichi Nakamura, and Patrick Ryan. And we will hopefully, uh, council will hopefully interview all three tonight, make a selection. Uh, we'll hold an oath of office, and they will take their seat and fill out the remainder of the term. Uh, so, uh, big news. And then just a couple, a couple of things to highlight. Um, last fall, I, I, I was giving kudos to Marnie Johnson, our finance director. She was doing a great job of maximizing our investment returns. And, uh, we, we said, you know, if she, if she keeps it up, she could, she could, uh, uh, bring in, uh, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars this year to the city. She did way better than that. Um, our annual dividend yields, now that the budget year's over, um, were seven hundred and thirty-two thousand. So she did amazing, and, uh, uh, just to show you how much revenue that is for the city, the, the property taxes, we only bring in five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in property taxes. Um, but Marnie was able to bring in additional seven hundred and thirty-two thousand just by properly managing, um, our cash. So kudos to Marnie for that. It's very nice to see. And then, as I was preparing for this, this council meeting last week, um, there were six different, uh, publications regarding Rockaway Beach, all coming out at the same time. I thought that was neat. I thought I would, I would highlight those. The Headlight Herald had two articles, one, one highlighting the Green Coast, New Green Coast Market. Um, the Headlight Herald also, uh, highlighted the benches, the bench, benches installed at the boardwalk. You can see a photo there of the Public Works crew putting one in. Oregon Coast Today had a nice article about the summer activities. MSN talked about the Pelican Grill coming to Rockaway Beach. And then the Tillamook County Pioneer had two stories, one on the, uh, July Fourth Parade. And also a really nice article on the Grand Marshal and Volunteer of the Year. And, uh, all the things they did to, uh, to earn those, uh, earn those nominations. It was a really good article. But there's a lot going on in Rockaway Beach, a lot of positive things coming out, and I just, I just wanted to highlight, highlight that for you all. Also, we have our new, our new planners here, Abram Tapia. Uh, he started July first, so he's, uh, he's hit the ground running. It's a very busy time of year for us. Uh, he's got a, a master's in community and regional planning from the University of Oregon. And tomorrow night, he'll have his first planning commission meeting, and he'll work the, guide the planning commission through a conditional use application and a variance application. If you haven't met him yet, please feel free to stop by City Hall and say hello. Um, and I can already tell you, he's a, he's a great addition to the team. And then, like, uh, uh, Public Works Director Mertz mentioned, um, uh, Logan and, uh, Mitch received, uh, uh, state certification for wastewater collection and water treatment. Um, and I think it just goes to show, we don't just have the hardest-working Public Works crew. They're also very skilled. They're state-certified. They're very knowledgeable about what they do. Um, it's great, it's great to have, uh, staff like that, uh, here working for us. And then I think maybe the biggest news, the new chairs. Uh, uh, before Dan left on vacation, we had a little bit of money left in the, in the, the, the ending of the budget year. So, uh, he was able to purchase, um, some nice chairs, uh, for everybody. And, uh, also thanks to everybody for, uh, repeatedly reminding me how terrible, uh, school chairs were. You know, I hope, I hope this is a, a good, uh, a good change here. And then lastly, the public meetings coming up. Uh, the only thing that stands out is we might have our first, uh, Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee meeting sometime in mid-August, uh, yet to be determined. And with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
Any, any, any questions for, uh, City Manager Shepherd?
Oh, thank you for doing such a, uh, thorough, uh, rundown of the initiatives that the city's working on. Between you and the, and, and, uh, the Director of Public Works, we've covered a lot already.
A lot going on, that's for sure, yeah.
And, and I, I just want to add, um, uh, again, back to the Jetty Creek wat- watershed and the work we've done on it. Um, I'm, I'm very proud of how quickly we've moved on it, and that, um, um, sits with City Manager Shepherd, uh, uh, city planner, uh, public works, uh, the Jetty Creek Working Group. Um, and part of that, what I'm really proud of is we've worked hard and have built a really, uh, excellent win-win working relationship with the two forest companies, Nuveen and Stimson. And an example of that is Stimson's willingness to work with us to, uh, no longer use herbicide, um, and, and do the mechanical, um, uh, work to remove the, the weeds. So, uh, very proud of the, the relationships we've built there, so.
Happy to hear that.
And I also want to add that, the, thank you to the city staff, the working group, which was Sandy Johnson, the mayor, and, uh, city manager, uh, along with some, uh, like, um, North Coast Land Conservancy and Sustainable Northwest. When I first started meeting with, uh, the city manager and, and the mayor about buying our drinking watershed, I told them, oh, this will probably take us six or seven years. And we were way down the road at six or seven months, so thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. All right, um, we have no public hearings scheduled, so we move on to public comment on non-agenda items. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our governing, our governing body takes the input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. Uh, the electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. Um, I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Uh, do we have, uh, folks watching remotely for public comment?
Do you have Leslie?
And Mayor, we'll have to, we'll have to watch the clock. It looks like we're, we've got a dead battery here.
Okay, I, uh, will you watch the clock for us? Okay, all right. And, and we don't start the countdown until after they've introduced themselves, so, uh, remind you. Um, all right, um, I've added, uh, Leslie. Uh, the chair recognizes, uh, Delta Holderness. Uh, please approach the podium, state your full name, and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please, uh, conclude your comments at that time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Delta Holderness. I live at ninety-three forty Song Street in Nadana Beach. Um, and I live there full-time. It's a lovely place to live. Um, my neighbors and I, some of my neighbors are here today, are aware of the recent Land Use Board of Appeals, Luba decision, twenty-twenty-five dash zero zero one concerning the Nadana Way of Development, and we are watching the next steps very closely. I'm here to discuss that Luba identified two critical errors in the city of Rockaway Beach's approval process and has remanded the matter back to the city for correction. That is, if the developer comes back to the city within a hundred and eighty days. The first error was improper authorization of residential development in a special area wetland. Luba concluded that the SA zone is a base zone and not an overlay zone. As such, its protections are foundational and not subordinate to other zoning designations. The purpose of the SA zone is to conserve significant freshwater wetlands, among other ecological functions. In accordance with the Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance three point zero eight oh, sections one through three and four K, SA zones are restricted to low-intensity uses and expressly prohibit residential development. Wetland fill is permitted only for approved uses or those that are water-dependent. Importantly, the presence of a wetland notification overlay zone does not alter or override the land use restrictions of the base SA zone. It merely functions as a procedural tool, obligating the developer to notify the Oregon Department of State Lands, also known as DSL, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer when to submit the required permits to the city. Given the limitations of the city's zoning and comprehensive plan maps that were provided in the approved development documentation, both maps, which are small in scale and lacking detail, it is virtually impossible to determine the precise boundaries of the SA zone. A revised and clearly defined SA map is urgently needed. This mapping should be conducted by a mutual third-party expert, unaffiliated, unaffiliated with either developer or the city to ensure accuracy and impartiality. The second error was an incomplete infrastructure for Phase Two. Luba also found that required infrastructure improvements for Phase Two were not completed as mandated. I found in the Phase Two documents, Exhibit A, Findings of Fact, which was dated February eleventh, two thousand and eight, they talked about onsite and offsite improvements and what those were. On page twelve, under the heading Final Plaid, Item One specified that developer was required to complete all improvements with one, within one year of tentative plan approval unless an extension was granted. No such extension appears in the record that I could find. Item number seven, under the same heading, further requires that all onsite and offsite improvements be completed prior to the submission of the final plaid. A key offsite improvement listed was the regional sewer pump station. This has not been completed. Lena, thank you. Furthermore, page thirteen of the same document references a wetland delineation report and survey issued by DSL, valid only until August first of two thousand and eleven. To our knowledge, no updated delineation permit was issued after that date. However, public tax law records available through the Tillamook County website indicates that homes continue to be constructed in Phase One between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and eighteen. This raises serious questions as at least two additional valid wetland delineations would have been required during that time period. I can't find those either. Finally, for a development approved in two phases, a comprehensive build-out schedule should have been conclude, included in the Phase Two documentation. Yet I could not find any schedule in public record. For this and many more reasons, the city and the planning commission should require the developer to start a new application for this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Please, this isn't a baseball game. Um, Art LaFrance? Please approach the podium, state your full name, and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer, well, or you'll get an, an announcement that you have one minute left, so.
My name is Art LaFrance. Uh, we have a place here at four eight eight South Anchorage Street, about twenty-five years. Um, it, it occurred to me that I've never visited one of these council meetings, and, um, I'm taking this opportunity to say, uh, three messages of congratulations to you and thank you. Uh, the first is, we're half a mile from the Big Tree Preserve, and I have visited it, um, almost since the day it opened. I was stunned by the quality, the vision, the execution, the accessibility, all rolled into a boardwalk through wetlands. We have had people visit from around the country, colleagues, family, and the like. We always take them there. They always say what I will now say, and that is, it's of the quality of national level, our construction, so outstanding. And as a guy who lives nearby, thank you very much. Uh, then secondly, um, because of our proximity, I have taken special notice of the new parking lot and of the new playground. And having grandchildren, took them over to the playground and could firsthand attest to the quality of it. And, and the need for the, uh, parking lot, I think was clear. But the, um, playground took special vision and caring, a- and it's extremely well-done, so thank you for that. And then, uh, the third is a thank you to Mr. Shepherd, because last September, I sent a rather scorching letter. I hope it was scorching. Him and to others, uh, concerning Clear Lake, which is what my property abuts and is a, a place of ecological wonder. Uh, birds, um, mammals, um, beavers. And it is maintained by a beaver dam, which the city took down last, uh, September, as it has a number of times. I was in communication with Mr. Shepherd, and to his, uh, credit, his response to me was, uh, open, uh, welcoming, set up an appointment with me, uh, with one of his subordinates, which I could not, unfortunately, keep. But I hope to follow up with, uh, this spring, and I'm hoping that we can do something which will make the, uh, availability of, um, beaver dam and support for a, a wetlands, uh, environment, a community which people can enjoy as much as I and my wife do, uh, every day off our backyard. Uh, and so that's why we're thanking the beavers. Uh, Mr. Shepherd asked me to bring you a special message tonight. They like the level of the water. Um, they think things are going swell. And I can report from observation that, uh, what are the beavers from?
Beavers are, you want to know?
And, and I can report from firsthand knowledge, I know more about beavers than I should. And this construction of this dam is a credit to this community, so thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, um, the chair recognizes Brian Coller. Uh, no, okay, all right. Um, the chair recognizes Leslie.
You want to make this?
Um, uh, you, uh, may indicate, uh, your, uh, full name and your city of residence. You may indicate if you own property or business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, uh, you'll get notified. There's one minute left. At the end of four minutes, we'll notify you that your time is up.
Okay. Hi, it's Leslie Vipond at eleven eighty-nine Francis Street. And I believe that last man's name was Art. If I'm wrong, I'm sorry, but it's what I caught from listening on my phone. Uh, I need to mirror kind of what he said. Mr. Shepherd is amazing, and I came to him nine months ago after coming to the city council and said, how does one person make a change? And over the last nine months, I've realized it's make a change? And over the last nine months, I've realized it's really never one person, um, we can have an idea and get the ball rolling, but it takes a lot of people to do that, and a lot of you are volunteers who sit on the city council of Rockaway. And over the last nine months, I've been super involved in watching what you do, and I just want to say thank you for how much you guys can accomplish. I did bring an issue to you guys that I noticed in October of two thousand and twenty-four. That was that, um, short-term rentals really weren't accessible, that there was no room for accessible short-term rentals after we'd instituted the cap. And it made some progress, and it went to the planning commission, and I thank you so much for that. Um, and right now, I believe what we're do, it's kind of at a standstill. Uh, so I wanted to come here and first say, I've seen your three hundred and sixty or seventy-page agenda packets, and I respect how much you can accomplish. I really just don't want this to fall to the wayside. Uh, I've gotten calls as a, as a short-term rental manager from people looking for accessible rentals. And as Ms. Mertz said, there are so many, um, good accessible plans in Rockaway, and I really hope that we're able to get this in front of you and finalize our plans or the plans that the planning commission has come up with and sent for recommendation so that we can move forward on this because it's going to be really impressive. Um, and then finally, just to kind of sum that up, also, Lorraine Woodward has been reaching out to me uh, from becoming rentable because she is eager for an update as well. And again, you guys have so much on your plate. I understand that. I respect it, and I am so impressed with the city of Rockaway. So thanks for being our planning commissioners and volunteering your time.
Thank you. Well, thanks to all for being engaged in city government and sharing your thoughts and opinions. Uh, yes, Robin?
Um, I was running late getting here from treatment, so I wasn't able to sign in.
Let me check. Is the council okay to add Robin to the list?
Yeah.
Um, Robin, please, uh, step forward, state your, your full name and indicate your city of residence. You may indicate if you own a property or business in Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, you'll get a notification. You have one minute left, and as you hit the four-minute, we'll let you know that, uh, you're done.
Yeah, my name's Robin Swain. I live right downtown here in Rockaway Beach. And I've got a couple hats on right now. We have the Rockaway Beach Music Festival coming up, uh, sponsored by NCAM. It's fundraiser for our music department at Neokony High School. And it's a two-day event. We have intentionally, um, kept our vendors, uh, for their to a minimum because we really want to promote the whole downtown area. They're here shopping town. Um, really are promoting this as a downtown event along with, um, obviously raising funds for the high school. And today, I wish we could have gotten the clip to you, but we just received it today. And that is the finished product for a commercial that features Music Festival and Downtown. Um, we'll get it shared on social media, but you will be seeing it on channels like Hulu and, and things like that as well. And we need volunteers, so this is where my hats double up here. Um, Rockaway Beach volunteers, uh, are managing, putting everything together for, um, the Rockaway Beach Music Festival and for movies and music in the park. So anybody wanting to volunteer, just contact RVvolunteersone@gmail.com. And every Thursday night, we need about four people for RVBA to set up the screen. And then for the music festival, boy, we need a lot from, we're going to be broken up into three shifts. Uh, so we'll need people helping manage, um, the beverage garden and keeping the parking lot clean. Our sanitary has graciously, uh, donated dumpster, um, to us, so we'll be able to stay on top of things like we did last year. And we just really hope that everybody will step up, uh, volunteer, but most importantly, enjoy the weekend. The bands that have been booked in are absolutely tremendous. There is literally something for everyone. So I think I covered all my hats here, and thank you for allowing me to do this last minute.
I thank you. We have no old business, so we move on to new business. Uh, consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-six, amending Resolution number twenty twenty-five twenty-two to correct a Scrivener's error. A Scrivener's error in section one of Resolution number twenty twenty-five, uh, twenty-two, adopting the budget, uh, where the city inadvertently stated a total number of thirty-five million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars instead of thirty-five million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars. This resolution acknowledges the typographical area and authorize error and authorizes the mayor to sign a corrected copy of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two for the record. Uh, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, amending Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two to correct a Scrivener's error.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six to create, uh, to correct, uh, the Scrivener's error.
Second?
I'll second.
Uh, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six, amending Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two to correct the Scrivener's error. Uh, is there any discussion from council? Uh, since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conriff?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Uh, consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, approving Oregon Department of Transportation recommended speed limit modification for the city of Rockaway Beach Downtown Business District on U S one oh one. Uh, if the council approves this resolution concurring with ODOT's recommendation, ODOT will reduce the speed limit in the business district from thirty to twenty miles per hour and implement the change at their expense. Uh, the public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Um, we will be doing, uh, the countdown manually, and you'll get notified when you have a minute left. Um, I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Uh, do we have anybody watching remotely for public comment? Uh, since we have no public comment, uh, this evening, uh, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, approving Oregon Department of Transportation recommends recommended speed limit modification for the city of Rockaway Beach Downtown Business District on U S one oh one.
I make a motion that City of Rockaway approves Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven.
Second?
I second the motion.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, approving Oregon Department of Transportation recommended speed limit modification for the city of Rockaway Beach Downtown Business District on U S one oh one. Is there any discussion from council?
Well, it's, it's, uh, it's in alignment with other towns around us, uh, from Astoria down through Tillamook, uh, and even Cloverdale, which is unincorporated, has twenty-five. So it brings us in alignment with that. But I also want to thank, uh, one of our residents who's also on our budget committee, uh, Robbie McLaren. Uh, he doggedly worked with, uh, uh, ODOT on this, and then I also want to thank our mayor who joined in with Robbie and carried the heavy load for us. So thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm, thirty feels very quick through downtown Rockaway. I just, I expressed some concerns upstairs that I just want to make sure that this is advertised well. Um, people need to be aware that this change is happening, and a neighboring town has done this. And it totally caught me off guard. I had not heard. I had not seen. There had been no, I mean, at least a little flag over the new twenty. But also, it's very important, and I'm glad that Deputy Waters is still here, that this also has to be enforced too. Otherwise, people will just dismiss it, and they'll just do whatever speed they want. So I'm totally in favor of this, but I, I just want to make sure that it's, one, well-advertised, and two, it is, it is enforced.
All right, um, since there is, uh, no further discussion, uh, let's vote. Council President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conriff?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, appointing members to the Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee. The Rockaway Beach Chapter Charter, Chapter Three, Section Seven, authorizes the mayor with the approval of a majority of the council to make appointments to committees. The council established that three members of this committee shall have served on the Source Water Protection Plan Development Advisory Committees, and Lydia Hess, Sandra Johnson, and Jason Maxfield agreed to serve on the Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee. We solicited applications for the remaining two positions and received completed applications from Darlene Johnson and Nancy Laga Lanyon, both highly qualified individuals. Additionally, I'd like to see Counselor Conriff serve the committee as city council liaison. Uh, the public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address the comments for the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Um, we'll, uh, manage that time manually. Um, I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anyone watching remotely? Uh, since there is no, um, uh, comment, uh, from the public, we, I will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, appointing members to the Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty twenty-five, uh, dash thirty-eight, appointing Counselor Conriff as a liaison and also, uh, two members of the, of the committee.
I'll second it. Uh, it is moved and seconded that the Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight, appointing members to the Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion from council?
Now, I'm, I'm thrilled that we received quality applicants for this. Uh, Nancy Lanyon is on the planning commission. She attended, I think, probably every one of the assessment committee meetings. Uh, she went with Counselor Cheek and me and a few other people to tour a forest in Seaside that is being restored. She's put a lot of work into learning about this. And, uh, Darlene Johnson brings a lot of government experience. And, uh, our working on our drinking watershed will involve some federal government regulations, but a lot of state government interactions. And so it's nice to have someone who has experience with working with state government.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, since there's no further discussion, um, let's vote. Counselor President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conriff?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Uh, consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, recommending granting of liquor license approval for Spirits of the West. This resolution is to consider recommending the OLCC grant, uh, grant, that OLCC grant a liquor license application uh, for spirits of the, from Spirits of the West for a full on-premise license. Uh, the public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. We'll manage the timing, uh, manually tonight. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody watching remotely? Um, since we have, uh, no, uh, citizens wishing to comment, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve, uh, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, recommending granting of liquor license approval for Spirits of the West.
I move that we, uh, approve Resolution number two oh two five dash thirty-nine, Resolution recommending granting of liquor license approval for the Spirits of the West.
I'll second it. Uh, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine, recommending granting of liquor license approval for Spirits of the West. Any discussion from council?
Excited for another business. Going to bring more people, more things for locals to do. Think it's fantastic.
It's nice to have another business at that northern downtown because that's been empty for a while.
Um, for those who don't know, Spirits of the West was a going concern in the Halim. The, the building was sold and they lost their lease, and so, uh, I'm sad for Nahalem to lose the business, but I'm happy for Rockaway Beach that he found, um, an appropriate place to, uh, to ply his trade here, uh, in, in Rockaway Beach. Uh, any other discussion? Uh, Counsel President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conriff?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, authorizing a drinking water source protection grant agreement to support the Lower Jettie Creek watershed acquisitions. This resolution authorizes an agreement with the Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board for a grant in the amount of one million, four hundred and twenty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars from the Drinking Water Source Protection Grant Program towards acquisition of the Lower Jettie Creek watershed. Public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes, which we'll manage manually tonight. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we'll add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody watching remotely? Um, since no citizens wish to comment, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, authorizing, uh, Drinking Water Source Protection Grant Agreement to support the Lower Jettie Creek watershed acquisition.
Make a motion to pass Resolution number twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five dash forty, and, uh, for the for the watershed enhancement board.
Uh, do I have a second?
Yes, I second the motion.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty, authorizing the Drinking Water Source Protection Grant Agreement to support the Lower Jettie Creek watershed acquisition. Uh, is there any discussion from council?
Um, this is something we've been discussing and working on for several months. This is, oh, I think the last phase of it.
All right, since there's no, uh, further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek?
Yes.
Counselor Conriff?
Yes.
Counselor Martine?
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Uh, consideration of Resolution twenty twenty-five forty-one, authorizing a payment to Simpson Lumber Company to support mechanical road brushing in the Upper Jettie Creek watershed in lieu of herbicide application. This resolution authorizes a payment of ten million, uh, ten thousand. I got millions on the brain tonight. Ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars to Simpson Lumber Company to support the transition from herbicide application to mechanical road brushing on ten point nine miles of roads within and adjacent to the Upper Jettie Creek watershed. Uh, the public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic, no, we're not doing electronic aid. We'll do it manually. Uh, City Reporter Thompson's taking care of that. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody watching remotely interested in speaking? All right, since we have no citizens, uh, interesting, interested in commenting, the chair recognize, oh, nope, we don't need to do that. We go down here. Ah, the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, authorizing a payment to Simpson Lumber Company to support mechanical road brushing in the Upper Jettie Creek watershed in lieu of herbicide application.
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one.
Second?
I second the motion.
Uh, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one, authorizing a payment to Simpson Lumber Company to support mechanical road brushing in the Upper Jettie Creek watershed in lieu of a herbicide application. Uh, is there any discussion from council?
No, this is obviously something that we need for the health of our drinking water, and, uh, and I want to, again, I, I say this, it seems like every time, but I want to thank the city staff for working to make this a reality.
Yeah, I just think that this is such a little amount, and it's something that's so needed to avoid the herbicide application. It's, yeah, it's a very simple.
I don't think any of this one.
Uh, since there's no fur, uh, no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash forty-two, approving additional awards for the twenty twenty-five Business Facade Grant Program. The facade improvement grant is funded with lodging tax collected by the city and is administered by the Tillamook Coast Visitors Association. The council reviewed updated applications from For Real, Wortman Properties Management, and Tillamora, Inc. at our workshop this evening and may now consider granting additional awards. The public meeting period is an essential part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Uh, we'll manage that manually tonight. I have the signup sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon and we will add you to the signup sheet. Do we have anybody watching? Uh, since we have no, uh, citizens, uh, wishing to comment, the chair will entertain a motion that the Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025 dash forty-two, approving additional awards to For Real, Wortman Properties Management, and Tillamora, Mara, Inc. for the twenty twenty-five Business Facade Grant Program.
I move that we, uh, uh, approve Resolution number two oh two five dash forty-two, Resolution approving additional awards for the facial, not going to be able to say it now, two thousand twenty-five Improvement Grant Program.
Second?
I second it.
Um, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash forty-two, approving additional awards to For Real, uh, Wortman Properties Management, and Tillamora, Inc. for the twenty twenty-five Business Facade Grant Program. Is there any discussion from council?
Well, I want to thank the three businesses for revising their original grant as we asked and coming back. And I also want to point out so that people understand there was a fourth one, and that was Troxel's Building. They chose not to, to revise theirs because after they submitted it the first time, they caught more things that need to be repaired. And so they decided to get another bid and, and go for next year.
Any other discussion? All right, since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Counsel President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conriff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Uh, filling city council vacancy, uh, candidate interviews. Uh, candidates will be interviewed separately. Those waiting for the interviews will be asked to remain outside the room. All candidates will be asked the same interview questions. Follow-up questions to clarify answers are permitted. At the June Workshop Council, selected Brian Caller, uh, Kenneth Kanichi Nakamura, and Patrick E. Ryan, uh, for interviews. Uh, would you, the three of you just mind standing so we can just get in it and everybody can sort of get a, okay, perfect, thanks. Please, uh, please be seated. Um, uh, we will interview candidates in alphabetical order, beginning with Mr. Caller. Uh, please come forward to the-
Well, don't they need to leave?
Wait, what?
Oh.
Here you are. Please come forward to the podium and the other two candidates, please follow. Uh, Public Works Director Mertz to the area next to the elevators. Director Mertz, well, after you, when it's your turn to be interviewed.
I've been on a lot of interview teams and, and you got to do it right. Are you doubting her? Is she doubting you? I've got all the faith in the world in you.
I'm wondering here. Uh, uh, wel- welcome, Brian. Um, so we'll go through the counselors and then we'll end with myself with a, with a question, um, for you. And so, um, I will begin with Counsel President Cheek, your question for Mr. Caller.
Well, I have a couple of questions for-
You only get one.
I only get one?
You only get one question and you need to ask the same question to each of the three candidates.
Oh, Penny, combine the two in one question. I was going to ask him how long he lived here. I guess I won't ask him then.
What do you think is the most important, uh, thing that you're going to have to deal with when you become a counselor?
Thanks for that question and thanks for having me today. Um, you know, I, I, my values and my beliefs align with the five-year program. And so for somebody to come to me and question that, like we were talking, or you were talking earlier in the planning committee about how you're going to present things to people, how you're going to sell it all. Now, there comes a time when you, you can sell and get both sides of the story and, and I think persuasion skills play into that quite a bit. Um, as far as communication goes, I think that, uh, um, well, I'll talk about that in a minute, but there's a lot of different ways to communicate to the, to the community. And, uh, one thing I think we should do is utilize Wheels on Wheels, their list, to go out and communicate to the elderly and get them to learn to use computers or get on Rockaway's page as well as signing up for Nextel. Because a lot of people, I don't believe, were. And so as far as your question goes, I think communication is what it's all about. Um, somehow, I, I don't go by Brian, I go by Scott. And someone approached me and asked me what I thought about, why are you going on, why are you trying to get on the city council? And I told him, I said, you know, I've, I've been coming here for thirty years plus, and I moved here five years ago full-time. And I really think that you're doing a great job. Charles Leadership, the council, um, like I said, it aligns with everything I, I value. And I want to keep it that way. And I'd like to be part of the team.
Uh, Counselor Conriff, one question. And it's the same one for every candidate.
Find two into one? Uh, how would you handle making necessary decisions that may be unpopular with some residents?
Well, again, when the person that approached me and asked me why I wanted to do this, the question that was presented to me was, what do you think about STRs? They said, the city council's stacked, they don't like STRs. If you get on there, we need your support. And I said, you know, that's, that's neither here or there. But I said, if you really look at STRs, in the down season, thirty percent get rented. In the high season, fifty-plus gets rented. Now, does that really bring a lot of work or a lot of revenue to the city? Not necessarily, because if you look at family of five, it's going to cost you three hundred plus per night. Now, put food and go to a restaurant, you're looking at a hundred and fifty dollars. It's not really going to happen. I think that's not good for the city in my own personal opinion, because if we had full-time residents, it would provide revenue to the city. They would shop, they would utilize everything here. So, back to your question, as far as, I hope I answered it correctly, but I, I just had to tell that person that, you know, that's what you believe in, but I don't, because I did the research. And I live on a street where there's approximately twenty houses, and out of those twenty houses, there's five times full residents on that street. You know, we're starting to see upscale things. So, I don't know if I necessarily persuaded him on this, but I did give him my side and, and it kind of explained the statistics on it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Martine.
Hey, Scott, can you tell me how many organizations, committees, or whatever you have volunteered for in our town?
In, in this town? Uh, I tried to volunteer for the parade, but nobody ever got back to me. But, uh, you know, nothing. I just recently sold my restaurant in Sherwood where I had to drive back and forth every day. And so now I have big time on my hands. And so I felt I would, uh, want to get on the council.
All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor McGinnis.
Um, so my question is about how you will grow as a city counselor. Um, having experience isn't, uh, isn't always the most important thing. Uh, the counselor that you would be replacing had done nothing in city government when she was appointed, and she became one of our most solid stellar city counselors because she was willing to learn and grow. So my question for you is, how do you expect to learn and grow as a city counselor?
Well, I have all of you to teach me and to mentor me into the position. But, uh, my background is, is largely business. Um, I've been on many, many committees where you have to have teamwork and you have to have, you know, you have to have the ability to be able to listen to other people's views and not necessarily agree with them, but you have to go with the majority. And then as far as people skills go, the community and, and managing people, I think mostly deals with people skills and having the ability to conversate with, with individuals and, and get their point of view and get their suggestions.
Okay, Scott, um, I'm going to wa- walk you through, uh, and have you do a, a brief situational analysis on Rockaway Beach.
Yeah.
It's called a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So, let's start with strengths. Could you share with us two strengths you see, uh, in the community of Rockaway Beach?
One is all the businesses filling up. So we don't have a lot of vacant buildings anymore. And so that's a plus. I, I think that we're getting, we're going on the right track. And with the new addition coming in, and I've heard there's more, uh, I thi- I think that's going to be beneficial to the community. So that would be my, my plus.
Second strength?
The strength, the second strength would be, I like the fact that, because one of the things I was going to bring up was the mileage, uh, miles per hour, speed zone. Um, with a lot of tourists in town, I know Nahalem just had somebody get hit and it, without reducing that, it probably wouldn't be very long before we did. So I really like the fact that, uh, the city is working with ODOT to reduce that down. What I would like to see is, I think somebody else mentioned, the city streets, third, Nahalem, second, are they're too fast. Now, one thing I would like to see is either we put those miles per hour signs out there telling, hey, you're going too fast, or maybe the city could look into putting speed bumps on those thoroughfares, I think would be popular.
Um, give us two weaknesses. What, what, what do you see are two weaknesses for the community of Rockaway Beach?
So tourism, I, I think we could do a better job with tourism. Uh, for example, Fourth of July fell on a Friday this year. The city went all out on Friday to give as much revenue and to, and to have as much fun as we could. They come Saturday, it was a three-day weekend, and you had families all over the place. I think it would be beneficial that on three-day weekends, we try to provide, um, organizational funds for the, for the city, for the team. You know, uh, the park, have a bounce house up there for the kids, something that the families can get involved in and want to come back to Rockaways. I, I think that, um, as far as committees go, you know, Robin was mentioning that she's having a hard time getting volunteers. I have a place up at Lake Merwer and Camp Sideaway. And in there, they have programs where you have volunteers. Okay, so you have volunteer security, which I'm on security. Now, we don't arrest, we don't do anything. We just kind of stop people, you're driving too fast, that type of thing. But there's event volunteers. There's front waterfront, which would be like our beach. So I, I think in that area there, if we were to get full-time volunteers, not just somebody that signs up on a whim, but people that are there for us. You know, for example, power goes out, and I'm all, I'm sure you all realize power goes out in this area quite a bit. I have a couple of older people that I go and help. I think if we had that type of committee that power goes out, we could say utilizing the, the Wheels on Wheels list, we could say, look, maybe this person needs help, they're on oxygen. Can you go up and see if they need assistance? Without utilizing the first responders and, and pulling them away from what they need to do. And I think there's an opportunity in our area to do a volunteer. During the Fourth of July, we can have volunteers all over the wayside, make the trip result.
We got a sense in the two, the two businesses. Let's talk about opportunities. What are, what are two opportunities out there that the community could take advantage of that they're not?
So that was one, right? Volunteer part of it. And, uh, well, I guess that was two, because if you look at volunteer part of it, and then the other one is tourism, expanding tourism by having things for the families to do here when they come here.
Um, and then the last one, uh, two threats.
Two threats to-
Two threats to our community moving forward.
I don't want to keep going back to the STRs, but, but I think if you look at the cities up and down the coast, majority of them are trying to get away from STRs because it's actually hurting the communities. Uh, I don't think it's that much of a plus. I think it's a beneficial, it's beneficial for the owner, but not for the city.
Second threat.
Second threat, I think, is, uh, the fact that we don't have full-time officers around here. We're having people walking up and down the streets, which I, in, in my neighborhood, I'm kind of like Mrs. Kravitz. I watch and see what's going on when I see somebody that I don't know walking up and down the street. So that would be another thing for, uh, volunteerism is to have neighborhood watch. And I think that, uh, we have people that are, that are breaking into houses. There's a lot of theft. A neighbor of mine just lost their lawnmower out in their front yard. Somebody came by in the middle of the night, stole their lawnmower. So I think that that's another threat is, uh, with all the empty houses around here, I think that we need people to kind of watch and see what's going on.
Thank you. Uh, I guess we need Director Mertz to, uh-
Yes. Okay, yes.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you having me today.
I think, um, they probably want to leave there. Yeah. Thank you.
Captain Brody, welcome. Thank you for joining us. Um, uh, so we'll begin with, uh, Counsel President Cheek. We'll ask you the same questions that we, we, we asked, uh, Mr. Caller. Um, and, uh, so, um-
I hope it's the same one. I wrote it down.
You, you asked the same?
I wouldn't forget it.
Good job.
What do you think will be the most difficult thing that you will have to deal with being on the city council?
The most difficult thing that I will have to deal with personally as a city council is not having any civic experience at all. I will be, um, hoping to learn and engage with all of you and, uh, research everything I can and do as much homework as possible to come up to speed on every issue I can in order to have an informed opinion.
You have a lot of homework.
Uh, Counselor Conriff.
How would you handle making necessary decisions that may be unpopular with some residents?
With some residents, uh, I imagine there are going to be decisions that are, there are always going to be decisions that are unpopular with some residents, and you're just going to have to manage, uh, their expectations, uh, from the onset. So outreach and communication is probably the foremost way of mitigating those risks from the start. Um, and after that, uh, connecting with and engaging with those, those concerned citizens, um, would be a follow-up way. And then I would, uh, consult the rest of you on what your ideas for such things might be.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Martine.
Me too. Um, which committees or groups or organizations in our community or have you volunteered with?
Zero. I have lived here, uh, only about four years, and in those four years, I have just developed a love for that area, the, the city, the hills behind us, the trees all around, and, um, but I have been working all the time, not having volunteer time. Uh, recently, uh, so for the last three years, I've been working in, uh, public health space. And with recent cuts federally there, I have a lot more time available. Um, when I saw this come up, I thought, you know what? Um, I did some work with the city of San Francisco a few years ago. I met some elected officials, and I was, I was intrigued. I was, I, I saw this come up and I, I wrote out my application. And then when I found out I'd been actually selected- And then when I found out I'd been actually selected, I just started watching all the YouTube videos, doing as much as I could to find out what's going on and how I could prepare for this. I come to you humbly saying, I have no civic experience. I have private sector leadership experience. And I have no volunteer time here in this community. But I would love to change that, and this was just my first attempt at that.
Thank you. Counselor McGinnis.
Well, your answer to Counselor Martin is, actually goes along with my question. Having prior experience is not always a requirement for being on city council. And so my question is about how you will grow as a city councillor. The councillor that you, who seeked you will be replacing had no prior experience, but she became a very solid stellar city councillor. And could you tell us how you expect to grow in the position and what particular actions do you expect to take to grow?
The growth into this position, for me, will look like homework and research. Again, I'll just come back to this, because there's so much for me to learn. That I'm really here out of a desire to help and just take on. I don't have an agenda that I want to bring to this council. This is an appointed position. So my goal is to just take on whatever needs taking on, help out, do the work to get up to the speed on the issues. And then if I can contribute meaningfully to the discussions by being informed and talking with community members, by, I would have loved to go through this forest thing in Seaside that you got to experience. Things like that are all the steps I would love to take.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we're gonna do just a quick SWOT analysis. So strengths, weaknesses, opportunities and threats. So if you just give us your thoughts on two strengths of the community of Rockaway Beach.
Two strengths? I love that you've been, the Business Facade Grant Program has been, is just fascinating to me. I love it. I love that not only were there nine businesses that did apply and get approved, but that the three or four that you didn't approve last month, you worked with again to get them over the line and get those applications up to speed. So I just love the engagement that the city seems to have with the local small businesses in order to keep the community vibrant and growing. Another thing, I mean, I've already said it, but just the ecological surroundings we have here are amazing. One of the best strengths, and the water here is delicious. So thank you very much for submitting our source there. That plan is fascinating to me, and I would love to know more about it as well.
How about two weaknesses?
Two weaknesses. Well, I think you are addressing one with the facade grant program, because the downtown business district, there are some buildings that could use some restoration and some improvement. So I believe there could be some, you could see some weakness in the general appearance by addressing. Another weakness I would say, I don't know if this is a weakness. I don't have the time.
Okay, okay. Opportunities, can you suggest two opportunities that we're not taking advantage of? That the city council, city government, city should look at pursuing?
Ones that you're not already taking advantage of. That's difficult, because again, I just kinda dived headfirst into everything that you, all the content involved created. And so I've kinda tried to fill my head with everything else that you've got going on and not really think of new things yet. Well, before I even started this, I was thinking, man, it would be great if there was a pelican in Tilgher in Rockaway. And then as someone who...
Well, thank you for the magic we made.
And then as someone who bicycles avidly, I did a tour down the entire Oregon coast in 2006. I love the Stanleyberry Trail concept that's going on. And I thank Counselor Lewis McGinnis for bringing up the e-bike ordinance in the workshop earlier. I do think that, well, nah, that's it.
And then, do you see any threats on the horizon, two threats that we should be aware of and working to mitigate those?
Threats, I mean, the biggest threat I can think of is just Cascadia, so she's a home, soon maybe with like preparedness. I see the signs everywhere. I've seen evacuation apps, I've seen all that. It seems like there's active preparation for that. So not one that I would thought of already. I wonder if there's a... It seemed like Macasa was buying a lot of property in the city. Is having one corporation like that owning a lot of real estate possibly a threat? Not sure. I'll stop there.
Well, thank you very much. Director Murch will take you back out to the waiting zone and bring in our next victim, I mean, the next candidate.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It is very, very good.
That's... I'm standing right here. Welcome, welcome. So again, you'll get asked the same questions that the previous candidates were asked. We'll go alphabetical, so I'll begin with my esteemed colleague, am I right? Council President Cheek.
Wait a minute, I gotta go find where I wrote it. What do you think will be the most difficult thing that you will have to deal with while you're on the council?
Usually the challenges tend to be funding and people trying to get your personal ear, looking for special interest issues. And those are both pretty tough to deal with. Sometimes the funding you have no control over. And, but you do have to learn to separate those personal relationships that you have with folks with the work that you've agreed to do as a member of any board, a city council. I did 20 years on a, plus on a school board, and there were lots of times the parents in the parents group wanted this, that or the other thing. And, you know, that's not the way, that's not the reason you get on a council, a board, an advisory committee. You have to have the interest of the entire, in this case, community. What's best for the community, how do you use the resources, whether there's a lot or a little. And sometimes you have to tell your neighbor or even your own spouse that you can't do, that it doesn't work that way. So...
Thank you.
Counselor Conrad.
Mine is very similar to Penny's. How would you handle making necessary decisions that may be unpopular with some residents?
I've made more than a few of those over the course of my life. And you, again, it's looking at what's in the best interest of the community as a whole that we're serving. And what are the needs, what are the resources that you have available? What's the best way to maximize those resources? And to get the long-term value from investing them. So again, you get on a board to be, to help an entire community. In this case, I would also be dependent on the input that was coming from the rest of you sitting at the table. And we reach a decision and we stand by that decision as a group. And my neighbors, I would have to deal with them. But I'm very approachable and I, and I tell it like it is. You know, I can't do favors for you. You may not like this decision, but here's the reason why. We made a decision that we made, we'll have difference of opinions. But we did what we feel is best for the community that we serve, that we serve.
Counselor Martin.
Pat, in our community, how many different organizations, committees, have you been volunteering with?
I spent 20-plus years on the New York County School Board of Education. Spent a great many years volunteering with park and rec programs when Laurie Declane was running those programs, Carnival in the Park, spaghetti pizza right here, Italian dinners, various things. I spent 20 years as a volunteer for youth groups with our church. I worked at Camp Magruder, but spent seven years doing volunteer programs, leading junior high week-long camp activities. I'm doing senior meals now, have spent seven years on the Tillamook Family Counseling Advisory Board. I just currently was elected onto the Tillamook Bay Community College Board of Education. And so those are the ones that have some kind of defined length of time. I couldn't tell you how many times I've just done things that were of a short term fill-in to help in various ways for community groups and organizations. Here to be part of the community and give back to the community and through that create opportunities for the folks of the community.
You're good. Thank you. Counselor McGinnis.
My question is going to be about how you will grow as a city councillor. And I've used the example that the councillor who seeked you will be replacing, Alicia Franken, who by the way, told me she's watching these procedures. She didn't have any experience when she was appointed, but she quickly grew to be a really stellar and solid councillor. So how do you expect to grow as a city councillor and what specific steps do you plan to take to grow?
It would start out by learning from the city council. You have policies and protocols that you work through and operate by. When I met with Mayor McNeely a couple of months ago, he provided me a copy of the League of Oregon Cities pamphlet and the City of Rockaway pamphlet that I've been through. And so I understand chain of command, roles and responsibilities of the various directors and members of the council and the mayor. And so I can follow that pretty easily. I was curious if there were, through the League of City Voters or of Oregon Cities or the Office of the Attorney General. I know on other boards that I've been part of, that the Office of the Attorney General requires trainings for certain positions and boards. And I was curious if there was anything like that that was a requirement or an opportunity, maybe not even required. But I have attended countless conferences and trainings and extended leadership programs to the Ford Family Counseling, or Ford Family Foundation, which was very, very influential in a lot of ways in Tillamook County for leadership programs that they put in place. So I am very open to gaining new experience and knowledge to grow in any role that I've been in. You walk in with a set of values and a worldview based on what you've already experienced, then the opportunity is to glean information and learn from the folks that you become part of another board with.
Thank you. And to answer, to continue with that, there are some required trainings. The Ethics Commission requires a training and then there's plenty of opportunities which all of us have taken in. It's one of the reasons we are such an effective city councillor is because we have participated in those trainings.
I know the benefit of those trainings. I've experienced them and have seen the rewards that come from them. So...
Thank you.
And we have a city recorder that makes sure we continue to color within the lines.
Someone has to keep us all in.
Someone has to be that person, and we have an excellent one playing that role. So Pat, I wanna, you're familiar with SWOT analysis. So I'd just like you to, we'll go through a simple one. Just tell us two strengths that you see for our community, for the city of Rockaway Beach to begin.
Rockaway Beach is, seems to be one of the most attractive coastal communities that draws in tourism, that brings a great amount of revenue to the area, which provides opportunities for a variety of things, I'm sure, to happen here. So that's a real strength. And based on my experience in interactions with various community groups here, I think the supportiveness of the different organizations within this community, there's a weaving of a lot of organizations that all have the same goal in mind, and that is to make Rockaway Beach the best and strongest community along the coast here. And the way that they work together and to give and take that I've seen over the years to make things happen as an organization is a real strength for Rockaway.
What about weaknesses, two weaknesses?
Maybe the size. There are limitations to what you can accomplish. It's a scalable piece, but we don't have to do things on the scale of a tiger or a wallatin. But you may not always have either the human or the financial resources to do some of the things that you would wanna do. That I can... The the challenge of maybe getting the level of recognition for things that do get accomplished here. We as a community do a good job of making the locals aware of this. But as you go looking for resources or partners for large-scale things, that might not be as easy. Director Shepherd pointed out, you know, we had eight articles this month that touted things that were going on here, which is great. And to be able to get that kind of notoriety on a broader scale that might bring in more, more resources for, and not just financial resources. Resources come in so many ways, but you know, knowledge, experience that can help us do and achieve the different goals that we have for this little community of ours.
How about opportunities? So you see any, I'd be interested if you have two opportunities out there that we should be looking at? that we're not.
A way to tap into our our tween and teen, our our youth and young adults to provide opportunities to be able to stay in our community to earn living wage jobs, to be able to afford to buy a home and to raise a family. That's getting so out of reach, as we know, in so many ways. And when we lose community like that and we're trying to fill positions and there's nowhere for them to live, then that or or living wage jobs for them, that becomes a challenge. So I know we rely on tourism such a great deal for a big chunk of of our revenue and operations. But it would be nice to be able to provide opportunities for families and and youth and young adults in this community to stay here. They've had great experiences up to that point. If they have to leave because they can't find something that takes them to that next phase, then that's the uncertainty thing.
And then do you see two threats out there that we should be thinking about and either preparing or just keeping our eye on them?
Great question. Maybe the competitiveness of other communities along the coast. There is a limited market for us, for for all of these communities. And so are we really making the most of the opportunities that we have here to attract businesses, to attract folks to come and and spend their resources, be part of this community, have the experience. So yeah, so the competition of the area. On my on my own level, I'm
All right.
Because there's so many good things going on here. It's from my perspective, in my thirty plus years of experience here.
Well, well, thank you very much, Pat. Please join the audience and Director Merz, if you'll bring back the other two candidates.
If anything like me about 2:00 AM, he'll be like, wait.
I got the answer. I've been there, done that.
Right. That's me. What's under voting?
You have to vote for three. All right. Thank you very much, Director Merz. Filling city council vacancy, we're going to go on to the voting phase. Pursuant to city council meeting rules and procedures, the council may now debate and discuss the candidates. After discussion, each member of the council will complete a ballot ranking the candidates in order of their preference for first, second, and third choice. Under voting is not permitted, and since I was asked by councillor Conriff what that is, that means you have to vote for three. You can't just go one and two or or one. In this matter, the the mayor is considered to have a vote. The ballots are tabulated. If one candidate receives a majority of first choice votes, that candidate shall be considered the winning candidate. If no candidate receives a majority of first choice votes, a second ballot will be held. The top two vote getters from the previous ballot will advance to the second ballot. For the second ballot, each member of the council will vote for their first choice candidate only. In this matter, the mayor is considered to have a vote. If one candidate receives a majority of first choice votes on the second ballot, that candidate shall be considered the winning candidate. If there is a tie after two ballots, the council can choose to complete additional ballots at the same meeting or at another noticed public meeting.
It was with all the stuff goes on the side.
At the conclusion of balloting and determination of a winning candidate, the council will then make a motion and hold a roll call vote to appoint the winning candidate to the vacant position. So let's begin. Is there a discussion from council about the candidates and and what we heard during the interview?
Well, I want to start by thanking all three of them very much for applying for this. They're three quality candidates. And I first came to city council as an appointee, so I know kind of what it's like to have to put yourself out there in front of the Zoom camera and 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 have your fate determined. So thank you very much for for applying for this.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say, you know, kind of what councillor McGinnis is saying. And I think we have three very qualified applicants who I think have Rockaway's best interests in mind. And my hope is that, obviously, we can't pick all three. So my hope is that the other two will continue to get involved. As I'm reading through these applications, you know, I'm reading one and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I would love to have more of this. And this is something that they've done in the past. So EVC and the RBVA, the Rockaway Beach Volunteer Association are two really good ways. I just am really hopeful that they continue to get involved and bring those those, you know, kind of highs that they bring to our community to to even just better our awesome little community here.
Any discussion from you?
I think that we had three very good candidates. It's really going to be tough to make a decision because they all had very good resumes.
I thought they all three were really good. It's very equal.
And and yes, I I'm very pleased with the three candidates, pleased with the the interview and the answers to the to the questions. And I will, I will just let you all know. You don't have to have civic experience to be elected to office and I think be somewhat successful in the role. There are lots of support around, lots of opportunities to learn. You just have to be inquisitive and curious and willing to 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 do the work for for those of you who shared that you don't have any background.
I can attest to that. Wonderful.
Is there any further discussion? All right, since there's no further discussion, let's complete our ballots and pass them to city manager Shepherd.
All right. So Patrick Ryan received five first choice votes.
So Patrick Ryan received the majority of first place votes. So the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approved Resolution 2025 dash forty-three, appointing Pat Ryan to city council position four.
I I make a motion that we actually got the resolution number here, sorry.
Forty-three. Twenty twenty-five, forty-three.
Forty-five dash forty-three, appoint Pat Ryan to fill the vacant city council seat.
Second.
I'll second.
It is moved in second that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash forty-three, appointing Pat Ryan to city council position number four. Is there any discussion from council?
Yeah, I I want to echo what councillor Conriff said. It would certainly be a loss for this community if you other two candidates did not stay involved with the city. I appreciate what you bring and we have vacancies come up on on the planning commission. That's how I started. I think that's how Penny Cheeks started. And we have advisory committees, and I really want to say you were impressive and it would be a loss if you did not stay involved with the city. I voted for Pat Ryan for number one because of his the knowledge that he brings of the city in, and it's easy to fill a city vacancy seat with some knowledge. So you'll be there soon as soon when you have some experience. So thank you very much again for applying.
Yes, I would echo that too. All three, the two that didn't win. Solid members of our community. You can bring a lot to future opportunities. So please, please stay engaged and get more engaged. All right, with that. In second, add discussion, elect a vote, council president Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously unanimously. Both of office for newly appointed councillors. City Recorder will now conduct the swearing in of the new city councillor.
Please bring your right hand and the left hand. I state your name.
I, Pat Ryan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As city councillor, position four.
City councillor, position four.
And support the Constitution and laws.
To support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And of the charter ordinances.
And of the charter and ordinances.
And rules of procedure.
And rules of procedure.
For the city of Rockaway Beach.
For the city of Rockaway Beach. Thank you.
Now, congratulations, Pat. Look, you got to count the table.
So this is how quickly it happens. You get four and you get to vote.
All right, let's move on to council comments. The chair recognizes council president Cheek.
I want to thank everybody that participated and worked for the parade. It turned out well. We could always use more volunteers. We were shorthanded volunteers this year. So if you don't have anything to do next Fourth of July, please get ahold of Sandy Johnson and she'll sign you up on our volunteer list. And Robin, excuse me, I didn't mean to leave you out, Robin. I also want to say that I think, Pat, you're going to make a good councilperson.
Thank you.
I wish we had three positions to fill because the other two candidates were very worthy of the position also. And I hope you continue to think of us in in the capacity of coming and helping us run the city. Thank you.
Councillor Conriff.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I've I've been in your shoes. I'm super excited for another new business here in town. I was very vocal about being very excited about Pelican, and then we got Beach Fight back. So I mean, I feel like we've kind of gotten two, well, three new businesses now. New being kind of a loose term there. And I'm very excited for the two seasonal firefighters. I think they're going to be very beneficial to us for what is proving to be a very busy season. My question every single month since I came on has been about the deputy. I'm super excited. Yep, Deputy Waters is still here. Although I did not ask about our fourth, I'll do that next month. But I'm really excited to to have another full-time deputy. And I think that it's, again, coming like the firefighters, it's coming at such a perfect time. And and I want the community to know that we do have full-time deputies. We now have three full-time deputies, and I'm hopeful that having three, we're going to see more presence, more patrol. Because I think that, you know, some of these issues that we have here in town can can be lessened by just their presence and them being seen. I'm excited, a little bit nervous for the opportunity to be the liaison to the Forest Stewardship Plan Advisory Committee. I know I've got a lot of work ahead of me. I've got some really big shoes to feel fill with Alicia. But I'm really excited for that opportunity. And then lastly, I'm just really excited for the movies in the park. As I was going through this, you know, election season, I think I bring a little bit different perspective to the council just being younger-ish than some of the other councillors. My kids benefited heavily from the Park and Rec program that used to be here with the city. And that was one thing that I've been approached with since I announced that I was going to run for city council. And one of the things that I was very passionate about was movies in the park. And I'm very excited that our wonderful group of volunteers has been able to make that happen. Full disclosure, unfortunately, I haven't been able to make it to one. Next week, I'm there, I promise. But I think it's a it's a step in the right direction to help give this community family-friendly, littles, bigs, everybody can enjoy it. So I'm really excited that that has come to fruition and and it's been very popular. So tomorrow, go see Moana. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councillor Martine.
Well, welcome, Pat, to our group.
Thank you.
We'll all work well together, and I've known you for many years. And since I thought we needed we needed a new councilperson, I thought of you at first. That's why I asked you to come sign up. Thank you for doing that and welcome. And welcome to our new our new police officer. Thank you, sir. Coming down here. And it makes me feel good, even though it's frustrating to get through town. But when it's a hundred degrees in Portland, our little town is packed. It takes a little longer to get anywhere, but they come here, not anywhere else. Makes me feel good. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McGinnis.
I want to welcome Deputy Waters also. And and restate again what's been said a couple of times, they are full-time deputies here. They leave to respond to emergencies, but this is their job here. And also, I want to say Thursdays is the town, the time to be in town. There's the Thursday Market at the Wayside hosted by the Chamber. And immediately, that's in the afternoon, immediately when that ends, go over to the movies in the park, and that's hosted by the Rockaway Beach Business Association and the cultural nonprofit NCAM. And I went last week and I counted fifty-one, RBVA counted fifty-three, so somewhere in the fifties for the first opening night. That's not bad. And yes, check with Robin, they could use volunteers. I also want to highlight some businesses again because we have something rather unique here in Rockaway. We have several shops that actually house other entrepreneurs. And that needs to be called out, I think. Warehouse Ten told me that they have twelve different local artisans that they buy things from. All of their stuff is either handmade or custom-made that's in their shop. They either make it or these twelve local artisans make it. And they also have a sister store, Barview. Little White Church Antiques has multiple small vendors in theirs. And they said that their choices are eclectic because they have because because each vendor sells what they want. So it makes it very eclectic. Beach Crafters takes first place. They have twenty-nine plus vendors in Beach Crafters. And you can find everything there from a children's book by Kizzy to local books that are authors in Rockaway Beach have written or being sold there. And I bought a walnut rolling pen that was handmade by an eighty-some-year-old man in Tillamook who sells his carvings there. You it's really, those twenty-nine vendors really bring a lot to town. Simply Charming has Simply Charming has seven vendors and many more consignments. I was in there this week, and a new consign consignor came in while I was there. Seaquest Treasures has three shop vendors and three artists, and they're growing and adding more. And the new art gallery, Blue Water Art Gallery, at my last count, was selling work from nine different artists in there. Trash and Treasures is not, does not have other vendors, but they used to for like 20 years, and they're still sort of set up in that eclectic mode where you can buy anything there from a rubber doormat to antique depression glass to kites for adults and jewelry. And this water, glass water bottle actually came from there. And I mentioned these businesses in particular because when someone shops at one of these places, they're really supporting a huge array of other artisans and businesses. The money is spread among the town. So please come to Rockaway and shop our unique places.
Good, thank you. Counselor Ryan, but you're on the spot. You have opportunity to say a few words. We do this at the end of every meeting. So we'll give you a chance to, as a as a new councillor, and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mayor. And first of all, thank you for the opportunity to to serve our community in another fashion. I I've shifted to older adults in the last couple of years from from children. So the various programs I'm involved in are more adult focused. And this but this is a community focus here, and I I really appreciate the opportunity. And I'm really impressed by the agenda tonight and some resolutions that have been passed because for the last several months, as I've attended meetings and workshops, I've seen the process of how these have developed. I've got a sense of understanding how this council works and the success that comes from a very deliberate process. So I'm looking forward to being involved in that work. Thank you again.
It's you. So just to begin, I want to just mention, we've all enjoyed another Independence Day celebration. The parade, some say one of the best we've had. The Firecracker Wiener Nationals dog races. As the crowd gets larger, we may need to consider other viewing options, maybe a Jumbotron up above so that people can actually see it. If any of you saw on Facebook, the the drone view of the crowd, it was just incredible. And my son and his girlfriend reported they couldn't even get close enough to see what was going on. But obviously, very popular event. The Lions Club Treasure Hunter Races was great fun for the kids. And the epic fireworks show, always a crowd pleaser. We owe the success of the Fourth of July to our staff, contractors, and volunteers who made it all possible. Thank you to everyone who put in the time and effort to make the Fourth of July in Rockaway Beach so special. But most of all, most of all, I want to thank those who took time to clean up the fireworks debris left behind on our beach. That's that's a just means a lot to me. Thank you for for doing that. Okay, next slide. All right, a self guided tour to Rockaway Beach's historic buildings by Scott Fisher. So earlier this year, local resident and writer Scott Fisher shared with me his vision of an interactive historical tour of Rockaway Beach, linking current buildings and sites with their roles in Rockaway Beach's past. I know from chatting with longtime residents and reading about our past that Rockaway Beach has a rich history that is well worth sharing. I shared Scott's vision with Nan Devlin of Tillamook Coast Visiters Association, who immediately understood the potential and signed up to work with Scott on this project. Next slide, please. Content will include a current photo of a business or historic location with a description, followed by a historic photo with a historic description. The tour will be accessed through one smartphone and will guide visitors and users from one business to the next, and I believe this will draw people into our business district. Good, perfect. Here we have some sample contact, the content that Scott's worked up. We oh, we missed a there we go, perfect. You'll see in the first one, that's Joe's Snacks and Beer Now. The next slide in the middle, that's when it was the Rockaway Studio. And then on the far right, Rockaway's post office is now Troxel's Rock Shop. So some of the ideas that are floating around in in Scott's fertile imagination. Next slide. And and we'll also do some vanished landmarks, such as the Natatorium. I think it's the most asked about landmark at the at the visitor center, according to Scott. Scott will create the content. Nan is working on the user interface and experience, and I'm staying out of the way. And I want to thank Scott for preparing the slides on our historic tour project for my report tonight. Next slide, please. We held our monthly coffee with the manager and mayor on Wednesday, June 18. We included a summary of the comments shared in the meeting packet for council and community members to review and consider. And our next one is Thursday, July 24. We do hope you'll attend as an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts in Rockaway Beach with City Manager Shepherd and me. Next slide. If you have ideas to share, questions, concerns about what is going on in the city of Rockaway Beach or what you are hearing or seeing on social media, please email me at cmcneely@corb.us. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with you. And thanks you for your time and attention this evening. And thanks to Public Works Superintendent Dan Emerson for the new comfortable chairs for our audience. I'm still listening and waving as I walk around town. May I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. Let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conroff.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
A motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned at 8:19 on Wednesday, July 25.
I'd rather not adjourn.